Okay, and with that, let's call the meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, Mr. Merrick, can you please do a roll call? Attendants, sorry.
Councilmember Ma.
Present.
Councilmember Sayer.
Present.
Councilmember Henry.
Present.
Councilmember McKnight. Mayor Johnson.
Present, thank you. All right, welcome everyone and thank you for tuning into tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members and we want to make sure that everyone who wants to participate and provide input can do so. State statutes allow the city to conduct meetings by telephone and the council earlier this spring took action to allow our city council and commission meetings to temporarily take place remotely during this pandemic emergency. This meeting will be open to the public, but precautions is set forth by the Centers for Disease Control, the Minnesota Department of Health, and Carver County Public Health should be exercised. Alternately, participants can join in the meeting and provide comments remotely via Zoom conferencing services. Zoom is a free conference, free service and can be accessed via the following. On your mobile device, you can download the Zoom app from the App Store or Google Play. On your desktop device, you can log into zoom.us or you can access it over the phone by dialing nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine. So once again, the number is nine two nine two oh five six zero nine nine. When prompted, you'll enter this information. The meeting ID number is eight nine five six two seven five four zero one eight and the password is eight nine zero three seven seven. So once again, the meeting ID is eight nine five six two seven five four zero one eight and the password is eight nine zero three seven seven. For anyone who's joining us by phone only, please be aware of these important instructions. We are broadcasting and recording this meeting live. You will also need to watch the online broadcast if you would like to see any visuals presented during the meeting. The link is under upcoming meetings on cityofcarver.com. There could be up to a one-minute delay from the Zoom conference call to the online broadcast, meaning what you're seeing could be a minute ahead of what you're watching on the online broadcast on the city's website. Please mute any external devices like your TV, music, or computer speakers to avoid distractions if addressing the council. All participants calling into the meeting will be muted until citizens' comments are recognized. You will be prompted by the mayor to speak at the appropriate time. Lines will temporarily be unmuted when the mayor calls for public comment. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council asked to be recognized. Be respectful, wait for your turn to speak, and don't speak to one another. It is important that all council members and members of the public be able to hear each other and the discussion. So please speak loudly, speak clearly, and speak directly into your phone or microphone. Please listen carefully to the mayor's cues. Callers wishing to be recognized must speak up to get into the queue when prompted by the mayor. Callers will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. Finally, different from our usual process, all actions of the council will be taken by a roll call vote and each will repeat their name for the record. We thank you for your patience and constructive feedback as we are working through this unprecedented situation. We are working hard to ensure your voice is heard while maintaining everyone's health and safety. All right, so item number three, approving the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
We have a second by councilmember Sayer. Let's see, I will do the roll call vote, so bear with me. Councilmember Ma.
Aye, Kristi Ma.
Councilmember Sayer.
I'm Laura Sayer.
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Johnny Day.
And Mayor Johnson. Aye, Courtney Johnson. The motion passes unanimously. All right, all right. Moving on to community comment. So this is the point where members of the public are welcome to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So Ralph, I see you raising your hand, so if you want to go ahead, I know that, thank you for your patience. Appreciate you joining us again, go ahead. Hey Ralph, I'm gonna just stop you for just one second. Just our usual procedure, when you introduce yourself, can you just state your address for the record right away, please?
Sure, I'm at eighteen sixty-nine Christie Drive.
Thank you.
Hi Ralph. Good day, so I just wanted to get a chance to share some things, some thoughts of that my neighbors and I have had over the recent, having recently become aware of water line expansion. And I just wanted to like spot a little bit of comments from Mr. Monis, the council members that we have on our concerns about it. I guess our number one concern that was a little more than, much more than a minor concern was the lack of communication from the council, any of this happening in the last, this one finding the sound of the last. The, you know, this has been a time for a couple of years, and other communities, they have signs, they send out news, but others say they say too many people do have their council meetings, we're discussing it, we can have a, a little discussion on it. But none of that, yours to live that. And then even in the open house, nobody from the council or, or the manager came to talk to us about it. So it's really disappointing about the communication aspect of it. We do have some concern about the building itself, the aesthetics, you know, the doors, and the industrial looking there. It doesn't really look like a house, it's a big tall brick building, all the red school buildings, and the aesthetics of the community. So we were hoping, so we were requesting they do, do make some changes to make it a little more aesthetic, to match the neighborhood. The noise itself, Mr. Monis did address that. We were asking that the, they say have to generate a home impact, that they would dramatically increase, you know, the noise. Because we can hear inside our houses. We also talked to the school, and unfortunately, kind of recently, we've been, oh, meanwhile, we've seen the building, we developed it. The water lines have been, we need some of those back. And another thing that I wasn't aware of until I heard today was closing off powerway. We already have, they were in a construction, very, very, very construction traffic, they're much away, but the most part they're going to use powerway rather than driving into the lower house, so that's, that's gone off. That's going to be a concern as well. And my, my personal point of concern, this is, this is just a big, a big matter of being here by the council or to see it. Whatever was the city hall, running that through with the most expensive option possible. The Green Steph Cities program, where buddy told me, they're very, so nicely, how much they appreciated what I said. Their meeting when it had passed in five four one. The gravel pit expansion, which I didn't hear about for the last few months, we didn't hear about. We'll ask you to pretty much, you know, you know, that it just demonstrates a real lack of concern for our neighbors. We're together in the city. We certainly would do something like that to our neighbors, letting them off the very last second, something that's going to be a big impact. So we would really love, we would really appreciate some more thoughtful consideration, some more, uh, planning around this, to, some more transparency about what specifically people are doing to address all these concerns. We have, we would really appreciate if you'd take the time to engage us correctly, those who are correctly infected. Because I know there's a concern on impact and feedback, negativity feedback to the community based upon the conversation of the construction, about the water lines, and how there's going to be a lot of people that are going to see it. And obviously, that always concerns, I would suggest reaching out to those people ASAP to let them know this is coming, so that they aren't surprised. So again, I want to thank you very much for your time tonight. I want to say hello to Mayor, to us all, but I really do appreciate the time to talk with everyone. And I'd really love the chance to continue this dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Opening up to anyone who else wants to address the council?
Yeah, I guess I would, let me close my blinds so you can see me a little bit better here. So, um, my name is Michael Beazell, and I live at eighteen eighty-six Christie Drive. And I'd really like to just kind of echo some of the things Ralph said, I think he summarized it really well. Um, and I guess, you know, we found out about this a week ago, just over a week ago, directly. It was the first time that we received something in the mail letting us know that there's this huge project happening in our neighborhood. And we went back to try to find, you know, if there's something we missed. And we wrote to see if we just were oblivious to it as far as any sort of notification to us. And we saw that, you know, back in January already, where this was formally approved by council. And it's July now, and we're just finding out about it. And then we also signed a March newsletter that comes with Water Bill, that there's a notification in there about the city is looking at a five and also a new water treatment. So at that point, still, months after this was approved by city council, to turn on to the, the water treatment plan through our neighborhood, the information we were given through the, the March mail or newsletter is that the new water treatment facility plan is, uh, in the works, or is what, was, what the plan was going to be. So to us, that seems like they were trying to hide it from us, and specifically putting in there that, you know what? We're considering about a fifth loan and new water treatment facility plan. So then if you put it that way, then nobody's going to question what we're doing in our capabilities. It really seemed like they were trying to, uh, avoid telling us what was happening there. And, um, I'd also echo Ralph in that, in the fact that that road is being proposed to be closed currently for the duration of the project. And we have concerns about that a couple of different ways. One is with a lot of construction traffic, especially people are going to be rerouted over to our house. People, especially construction traffic, already goes too, too fast down our little street. And then two, we have requested, um, in the past, from the past public works director to have, um, sign a couple of signs to him, to our neighborhood. Because we have myself, and then our two of our, our little kids, um, have hearing issues. And so we requested to have, um, have our hearing child sign to put up in our neighborhood. And we were thrown off by the former public works director. And we just haven't had a chance to get around to responding again to, to new people in the city. So, so that, that's a main, main concern regarding that role as well. Noise is a big issue, um, you know, that generator, as Ralph mentioned, I have hearing loss, I can't hear very, very well. I can hear that generator beside me. Um, so that, that's another huge issue that, that we would really like to, to have addressed with this. And then otherwise, you know, the project itself, when we look at the numbers, when we look at what's, what's going on with it, it really seems totally unusual that this, this particular project or this particular, um, option was, was chosen because in the long run, members that represented the council is the, goes the second most expensive option. So that was a little bit confusing to us as well, where it seems like it's, it's eleven million dollar mandate, and to leave the site to move forward. And we'll have to build another water treatment plan in the future to plan for it to be able to.
Mayor Council, if I could address this, and I, I apologize if this hasn't gotten to you. But Brian Schoop and I did connect with this, and I actually have a draft ordinance that sent to the city attorney, so it'll be coming to the council's next work session.
That's regarding the death.
The death, yeah, there, there'll be a, an application process. Brian did leave the, the city of Carver about two months ago, so maybe that's where the, the gap in communication. But we are still moving with that, uh, full speed ahead, so I apologize for that, uh, gap in communication. I would also, um, Mr. Pencil, Mr. Bolso, if, I mean, there are, there are, and I, I will take responsibility for the timing of the communication. I, I would offer that there are, there is still plenty of time to communicate whatever concerns you have about any phase of this project. The council hasn't, um, voted on really anything regarding this project, that, that the engineer is working on plans and specifications, but the council hasn't approved them. Needless to say, I, I guess I'd be interested either online here or offline of understanding what success looks like for you, because I think any of the number of the things that I, I've heard are possible. Probably with the exception, I think it'd be a little bit more arduous to, to consider another site. But I do, I do think all those pieces are, um, on the table, whether it's landscaping, whether it's the closing of Tower Road. I, I think, I think it's natural to have this kind of feeling of this is a huge project and why am I just learning about it now? And so the timing of that is kind of, um, in the eye of the beholder. I'm, I'm sorry that we didn't meet your needs there, but I do think there is time to have those conversations. And if, and if there are things you want the council to consider, um, we can put you in a position to advocate for those. This isn't, isn't done, if there's, there are things that you want to see happen, you can certainly advocate for them. But there, um, I, I, I regretting that you have this, um, perception of, of what may or may not have happened. And so we want to try to remedy that. And it's also just one final point related to Mr. Pencil, I'm not sure if you're aware, and sometimes these details are, um, are not significant to someone who's not involved in the day-to-day. But the, the city of Carver wasn't involved in that land use application for that, for the mining operation. And so that was a, a Carver County decision. And so, um, I acknowledge the frustration that the community had. This week, the city wasn't in a position to make comment on that. But, uh, it, I'm glad that you brought those up, brought that issue up, because without you saying that, uh, it wouldn't give us the ability to address it. And I'll be in contact with you, Mr. Bolso, if I'm saying that correctly, on getting you that draft of that ordinance, so you can look at it and make sure that, um, um, it's what you're hoping for, or hoping to get out of that, so we don't take a bunch of action here and it's really not going to meet your needs. Um, so maybe I can connect with you offline and, and get that draft to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And I, I think our, our overall concern is that, you know, yeah, we have some, but no, like it would have been nice, something this significant happening in our backyard to be part of the process much earlier on, rather than after. We're there inside, and this is a very, my own.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else who wanted to address the council? All right, so, um, I just, Brent did a really nice job of kind of addressing your concerns. Um, I'll echo his thoughts in terms of, um, I, I'm, I'm sorry that you feel like you all are being brought in. Just, Ralph, I just wanted to address your concern about council not being there. We could not attend those. If any one of us, if there's ever more than two of us in a public place, um, that is a violation of the open meeting law. So, um, lest we posted it, um, I don't think that that was an option for city council members to go. I think there's also really a huge concern, um, speaking for myself, um, but also kind of from the optics of the city being really mindful of the global pandemic situation that we're in and not, um, taking really on any, um, unnecessary risks. And that was, that was the reason why I didn't go out, I'm honestly keeping a fairly low profile, so. Thank you both, though, I appreciate your comments and addressing, um, council. Please note that if you ever have any concerns, again, kind of like what Lori said in the, the work session, we all have emails, all of our cell phone numbers are all posted on the city's website. And then you're also always welcome to come back and to address council in this venue, so, thank you. All right, um, moving on to presentations and reports. Chief Trimble, tell us about what's going on in the fire department, please.
All right, can I share my screen, Ralph?
Yep, one second. Accidentally muted you. Good to go.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members, for giving me the opportunity to talk to you about what we have going on in the city of Carver. So I just want to run through a couple of operational updates, um, kind of where we're at year-to-date as far as calls. So year-to-date, Carver has represented fifty-six percent of our calls, thirty-five percent has been dogged and contacted, five percent has been mutilated. Forgot that, sorry. There you go. Sorry about that. And then we had three percent of our calls have been mutilated surrounding community. Year-to-date, with COVID, we ran above each calls. Uh, that's the line of where we are for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. And a lot of time of where we were in twenty seventeen. So as you can see, COVID has really affected us. Here at one of the recent developments in Carver. I think, uh, probably regions like that, we're, 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 but I think they had a staggered place, or a staggered sign up.
Excuse me, Kelly. Can, can you break down the green on the graphs? Do you have a different color besides green? Because I can't differentiate between February and March, May and June.
Um, yeah, I can do that on the next one. Um, but, um, oh, you want to know how many for each month?
Well, when I, when I see a graph, I'd like to be able to differentiate between the months, as that's typically what you're trying to make out as far as your point, um, on your calls, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I can, I can quicksand if you have an update or take experience.
Thank you.
Um, this one I put white lines in, so.
But it's still green. There's more than two colors.
We don't know which is which.
Um, fire calls were at about ten percent, um, medical fifty-four percent. Personal injury accidents were at about four percent. Um, had zero searches this year so far. Gender dysconditions were at about four percent. Service calls, um, and I went over the media when we saw that, I was, I think, if you guys have any questions, we'll send them over now. Service calls are about twelve, uh, twelve percent. Two to ten calls would be seven, and false alarms are at seven. So this is pretty normal. Mental factors, the last couple of years, the message typically will be ran.
Hey Kelly, it's Courtney. It's not that I wasn't hanging on your every word during your last presentation, but can you remind me what a service call is again?
Service calls would be, um, like, uh, not really, um, uh, fire alarm going off, like a false alarm, but just kind of needing, um, needing help in some way, shape, or form. So whether it's, uh, the sheriff's department needing help, or whether it's, uh, you know, going in and, you know, finding, like a gas leak and finding no gas presence at the facility, so just kind of going up in and searching, uh, and making sure that it okay, you're safe.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Um, and then just, this is kind of a grand, most of our days are pretty normal, average. Monday seems to be evening, Monday seems to be a drop-off, and then we have a pretty consistent amount of calls every other day of the week. So no, no days kind of above or not. And like a Sunday, you could have one day where we have three calls, it depends on that day entirely. And then, uh, kind of just going on, uh, the new engine that we ordered last October is in Apple Valley. They are doing some final kind of prep work before it gets delivered into the city of Carver. We'll have about a month or two of training on that engine before including the service. So we're anticipating that we're going to service some of that new stuff. Uh, as far as the staff is related, they're all doing well, under good conditions, they've actually adjusted pretty well. We've adjusted our trainings, we're not doing full department training, we're doing them in smaller companies, uh, and more frequently. So on every given day, normally, one day a week, we're doing training now, so we can accommodate a smaller group. Our calls that we're responding to, we're still operating in a level three response, so, uh, we are releasing the staff, so they're not getting to kind of hang out and talk to one another. They've all done really good through the new, uh, changes on the department. And we currently have, as far as our PPE related to COVID, if our supply is healthy, we are currently building up, uh, supplies for the next round of, for the call. And we think that as things will kind of clear, it's a lot, but we believe we're in a good place with all of our protection here. We are hoping to continue to run our duty officer for the rest of the year, uh, when needed. So this is, uh, not a chief, but normally a captain, that we put into a vehicle that will respond to the call. Our, respond to the call with a chief, the most, or not, most, like, ten or twenty percent of the calls to be handled with just one chief. In fact, the surgeon or technical or medical, things like that. We are very curious, uh, to determine what they're, what they're going to call. Our hiring process, we're starting, obviously, we're currently looking for two members. We're hoping that this will wrap up some of our, uh, COVID. But more would kind of happen. And then we've kind of made the decision that we don't believe that there can be a safe way for us to, we're in, we're in open house, so we are not going to open them. That's kind of sad or disappointing in fact, of the current reality of the position we're in. I think most firefighters will be disappointed about that. Any questions?
Kelly, this is Joy, the hiring process for the two firefighters, um, is this additions or replacements?
Um, it's replacements. Uh, over the last year, year and a half, we've lost two members through the retirement.
Uh-huh, okay, gotcha.
Our full number is, or the number we tried to target is about three.
Gotcha.
And we currently have about three helping staff applications to run.
Great, okay, that's good. Thanks.
All right. Can you guys, a brief update on our radios? Uh, our portable radios are kind of more lightweight, like a firefighter, it's inside a structure or inside the hot zone, but the outside is typically, in most, uh, most situations. The current radios we have, we've purchased two thousand and five, they're no longer supported with our two services. So year-to-date, we have five units failed that we can't get repaired. And we have another one randomly failing. We have the randomly failing one in a position where it's not really a critical thing. At the current time, we have thirty-two portable radios, fixed on our, the current models, and we have twenty-six that are no longer supported. Uh, we will continue applying for grants. Year-to-date, we will apply for the twenty nineteen, we have two grants, one in the twenty, and two in the twenty twenty, comes out, we'll apply for that group. Uh, Minnesota DNR Center Point, Minnesota Valley Electric, and Fire also. We will apply for all those for radio, we're waiting to hear the outcomes. A lot of the outcomes will hear within the next month. I currently have a plan using existing funds to the, uh, in the existing budget. And hopefully, with your permission, I might have to report this time. But we've launched from the sale of engine twelve upon the replacement of eight radios. Year-to-date, if those grants are not awarded, this would be, uh, it starts with a manageable replacement plan, and we will afford it in this budgeting for the radio, and you have twenty-four. With that said, I'm open for any questions, if you have any to add.
Questions, comments for Chief Trimble? Go ahead.
Uh, Kelly, how much does a typical radio cost of, of the new ones?
Forty-five or forty-six hundred.
And then I'm just suggesting to Brent, um, for the not having the open house, um, just, you want to put that in the newsletter? Perfect. That's all I got, thanks Kelly, keep up the good work.
Anybody else, Joy, questions, comments? No from Joy, no, no. Kelly, thank you, um, just a few takeaways. I was a little surprised that you weren't seeing a few more calls with, during kind of our stay-at-home period when people were at home. So that was super interesting to see that those numbers remained, um, fairly consistent. I love what you have in this presentation about starting a manageable replacement plan for those radios. It sounds like they're on a little bit of life support at the time being, but if we can try to extend the ones that we have and kind of do, um, as much planning as we're doing. extend the ones that we have and kind of do, um, as much planning as we're doing for your, I'm going to say it wrong, the SCBA's. Am I right? Am I even close?
Yeah.
Okay, um, for the radios, that would be good to kind of have a long-term replacement plan. Is that something where the old ones will talk to the new ones if you phase in new radios?
Yeah, they're all on the same, um, they're all on the same phone, so like, are you, the six and one we have, they're the same.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then the only other thing, um, you know, I know that the decision to not hold the fire department open house was a tough decision. Um, and I know that you're making these decisions based on what's best for the health and safety of our, our fire department and, and their families. So, um, I recognize that it was a, a tough decision, but I appreciate you, you making, um, what was tough, but probably the right decision. Definitely the right decision in this case, so that was my, my last comment.
Chief Trimble, would you mind updating the council as well on the night to unite in the fire department's plans for that event?
Yeah, at the current time, we don't feel it would be best for the fire department to participate. And I would also say the same thing with Carver County Sheriff. It's just not a good idea for us to be going around from neighborhood to neighborhood. And our fire apparatus is kind of linking every neighborhood together with a, with a bunch of guns. So we are going to decline to participate this way.
Fair enough. Thank you for the update, Kelly, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, um, moving on for our update from the Carver County Sheriff's Department. Corporal Sandberg, what's going on?
Uh, yeah, so I'm just, a quick overview of stats. Uh, from a little over the first half of the year, I, I ran these on Friday, I believe, so they're through from January to the end of next week. What would we categorize as a service group? They're grouped into crimes against persons, crimes against property, and then all other, um, criminal crimes. Uh, so I'll start with our group A, which is crimes against people. Um, and I'll run through the categories that have the highest incident totals, uh, and I believe my specific packet made it to some guys, but I personally glad of the professional, Kelly, assuming, uh, but playing. You can, uh, review it if needed, I can send out a here and there also. Uh, so our A crime, uh, theft is our leading, uh, category. Uh, we have more than any other city besides Shampton. I think that that's what's attributed to the fleet farm. They have a great loss prevention, uh, system. They pretty much stop anybody that they can, handle all the information that needs to get from there. I would say they recover most of their items where people, uh, are either apprehended and throw their items uh, in the loss prevention office, or they push out a part and ditch it in the parking lot before they drop off. Um, in addition to fleet farm, we've seen a lot of theft from mailboxes in this, and theft from unlocked vehicles and boats and dragwinds. I would encourage everyone, if you're mailing something unimportant from your home, or if you need to mail a check, or pay money, or pay cash, then drop it off. Uh, at the post office or one of the roof big move-ins rather than your outgoing mail. It's a trend all across the country where those little flights in our mailboxes are just like handy, uh, for people who are looking for, uh, uh, opportunities. Um, moving on, our second category is theft, the second highest in the group A. We've seen an uptick in fraud, noticed weeks from last year, and it's mostly due to unemployment insurance fraud. It's being seen all across the metro, all across the cities within the county. Uh, it's pretty easy, if somebody, uh, reports that to us, we take an initial report and then we refer them to the unemployment insurance office. And they'd have a whole team who's investigating all of these trials. Uh, finally, we have property damage, we've seen a lot of this, uh, in the downtown Carver area. Uh, it's already admitted a few of our businesses, and it's act, people have actually brought out close air, that actually, with various items that they found along Broadway and along Fourth Street. Uh, I haven't seen any activity or fraud, including damage since we posted, um, a picture on Facebook trying to identify three juveniles. Uh, so I think that's helped maybe the community now knows that there are eyes that's surveillance downtown, so that's a plus one. Moving on to group B, which are our crimes against property. So property damage technically counts as crimes against people, uh, because they have to pay for that. Uh, we, uh, don't have much here in this category, we, we, uh, we, we have two disorderly downtown outside of our bars, uh, and we had one DUI, which was actually drug-related, so it had nothing to do with alcohol. Uh, moving on to our non-criminal crimes, our, our number one, and it comes for most of our calls, I would say nearly fifty percent of these are, are strictly non-criminal. There are people who don't necessarily know where to aid in these questions, who question the comments that they have, and so they call nine-one-one or an emergency number, and they have questions for officers, they have questions about, um, their property, questions about permits, they're having neighbor issues or even parenting issues. Uh, so they're, they're not really law person related, but, uh, Deputy Crosser and I take care of them. Next, we have suspicious activity. Uh, these are both self-initiated or caused by citizens, and we go out and investigate what's happening. Uh, sometimes it can lead to criminal activity, and sometimes it's nothing other than someone acting unusual. Uh, next we have medicals. Uh, we've seen a few less that we've been attending to with COVID. Uh, our dispatch alerts us if they're sending RIVU, which is our primary, um, medical service, medical ambulance service. And, uh, depending on their protocol, or if they need us at the scene, we'll respond, otherwise we've been taking a little bit more of a backseat on our medical detail. Uh, we've also been responding to disturbances and alarms probably at the same rate as before COVID, and I would say we've been responding to less or fewer open doors since COVID. And, uh, those are mo, mainly initiated, self-initiated by the police officers. But I think the, the stay-at-home order, people have been going out less, so they maybe just go open the garage doors or go, uh, won't go out much. Uh, the next slide is our arrests. Uh, and it looks like we have a lot of arrests for shoplifting, uh, of our fifty-five arrests from year to date. Uh, sixteen, seventeen, um, are from shoplifting. Uh, I want to make the point that these arrests also include citations. If we go there, we apprehend someone, and that they steal or shoplift a, an amount that's not arrestable, we can give them a citation. And in our category, um, it counts as arrest, uh, so we have not arrested that people. But our, our two biggest charges are shoplifting and drug and alcohol violations. Uh, next up, traffic, uh, from, or traffic citations, I should say. I, uh, we, these are down in the same direction from the sheriff's office to be much more lenient with, um, tabs, expired driver's license, and any other type of offense that would stem from an administrative process, uh, that has been expired or overlooked since March. We've not been intervening nearly as much because we acknowledge that it's near impossible, uh, to step foot into the MBS's. Uh, and then we're also seeing much less traffic, uh, out and about during the day. I think credible, but the traffic that wasn't there in late March, April, May, uh, it's starting to creep back up now again now. Um, I have the graphs on a day of the week and then also times. Uh, this has been, has held steady for several years now. Uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are busiest days, and this winds up with the days that Deputy Crosser and I both always work. Uh, I, I give Deputy Crosser once a rotating shift, he works either Tuesday to Friday or Wednesday to Saturday. Um, and so, uh, he is working always during our busier days, and then Tuesday and Saturday are our next ones, so it just holds nice and feeling. Uh, looking at hours of the day, uh, I would say our busiest hours are from seven to three, is generally when I work. And then from five to eleven PM, and, and again, that's when Charlie's looking, too, thanks Deputy Crosser. Um, but some trends this past six months, um, is our, an uptick in, and then I've also noticed there's actually been less thefts and burglaries from reconstruction sites than there was last fall, uh, so that's a possible. And that's what I've got.
All right, any questions, comments for?
I have a question and then a comment, or just trying to get some input and a com, that, more of a comment for Brent. Um, so my first question, um, Corporal Sandberg, is if somebody were to get a citation for today's definition of illegally driving a UTV, how would, would that show up on the report? What category or where is that?
Yep, that would show up under statistics, and, sorry, I lost my traffic citation. It would show up as an ATV, and we, I personally have not cited anyone for that yet, I have stopped them for ATV use in the city.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think from my conversations with citizens, they did not realize that was an ordinance. Um, I don't know if it hasn't been enforced in the past or, or what the deal is. Uh, but I've seen a lot more people and spoke with a lot more people who didn't realize it was against ordinance. So up until this point, I haven't stopped the same person twice, so I personally have not given any citations for that. And it appears, uh, Deputy Crosser has them either.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, my comment was in, just kind of a suggestion, and more grabbing the idea from cultural member Henry on like what things to put in the newsletter. But if there are a lot of like repeated calls, um, that are going to the sheriff's office that aren't emergency, but they, it sounds like maybe sometimes they just need a resource, so even kind of maybe knowing, and if you could share that with the city staff, like, what are the top four phone numbers you give out, or, or a handful of, you know, what are the top things residents are asking for? Or, or the kind of need to be directed in the right area for a resource? Maybe that's something that we could kind of put in as a rotating topic in the newsletter.
Yeah, I can work with Deputy Sandberg. Or Corporal Sandberg.
Call her Chief Sandberg. Do you want a promotion? Chief Sandberg?
Yeah, chief.
All right, um, any other, let's see. Joy, anything from you? See no? Glenn, Christie? No? Think we're good. Chief Sandberg, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
Um, let's see, all right, um, public hearings, all right. It is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program Evening. Mr. Lannister, take it away.
Well, hello, good evening again, uh, Brent, I need that screen shared once again, so, uh, I'll, I'll start this, uh, I'll start this one there from ninety, the city's permitted by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Uh, the, uh, municipal separate storm sewer system permit, MS four permit. So.
I have a quick, you know what, I'm sorry, Dan, I'm going to interrupt you for a second and just open the public hearing officially.
Okay.
And then, that was your call. Thanks. Okay, go ahead, Dan, have at it.
So you might ask, uh, what do we do to require this permit? I tell you what, average, average person would identify a permit with something that you're, you're looking, looking for. You're going to go do something, and then you, you, uh, need to go get a permit to, uh, to, uh, do it, uh, according to rules or notices. In this particular case, this is, this is somewhat regulated, uh, by NPCA. This is just regulation in which if water falls in your city and discharges, you are required to, uh, have this permit. And so the only way to really not fall in line with these requirements would be a big up front off over the city in which no stormwater falls. Otherwise, there's, there's really no law that, that is required in some way. When water leaves, uh, leaves your boundaries, this is a permit that regulates the, the water. So one of the requirements of this permit is, uh, to inform the public. And so this public hearing is geared towards, uh, outreach and the opportunity for comment about the things that are being done by the city, and, you know, some of the requirements that involves all the, the permitting process. So that's, it's really, it's really to receive input and provide status update on what you're doing under the condition to permit. So the MS four, the, the MS, uh, municipal separate storm sewer systems and conveyance, or system of conveyances designed and used for collecting stormwater with throw-in strength systems. Uh, I'll, I'll skip reading the format, but ultimately it's owned and operated by us, like government units that, uh, there's the Water Act, the district, uh, make water that falls in Carver that leaves, is, uh, regulated by this permit. So the NPCA designated that all cities urbanized areas must obtain an FPDs, uh, stormwater permit. Carver meets requirements of the mandatory and the support as a community in an urbanized area. City will authorize back in two thousand decks, uh, it's an MS four, uh, cities over, uh, ten thousand automatically, but Carver has various departments that bring in, uh, uh, rules of this program, so. So what is a SWAP? That's a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. So ultimately what you're doing is you're, you're, uh, creating a stormwater pollution prevention program for the entire city. Every site would have one of these, every project has one of these, uh, every development, every single piece of, of activity would have an S four stormwater pollution program. The city is ultimately responsible for its own as, as a municipal. And so that link, it's everything the city owns, effectively what that is. So it includes regulatory mechanisms, education programs, inspection, uh, the aesthetic education. It's, uh, what is the city doing or, um, or looking, looking for for, uh, for stormwater pollution to try and improve the wrong, uh, conditions, so. You understand, NPCA, so it's necessary to execute the scope requirements, uh, in light of, uh, easy control measures. Public education, outreach, and public participation, involvement, both of those are applicable tonight. Uh, illicit discharge, action and elimination will effectively be, be on the watch for, uh, failures, uh, anywhere. City, like construction, uh, say stormwater runoff, which is again, well regulated by the city, it's probably without each site required by their own permits, post-construction stormwater management, uh, take over the pond. Uh, there's, uh, management to those stormwater ponds. That pollution prevention, up good housekeeping, for local operations. So what is, uh, the state done in twenty nineteen? It's completed by twenty percent of the city's stormwater ponds, all falls, completed by all structural, uh, stormwater. BMP, sorry, BMP is a best management practice, called the best thing to do to keep the water clean. Uh, and, uh, silvers, for example, is a best management practice. Uh, inspected for residential developments and inspected for commercial homes, to make sure that they're in, in, uh, within the rules. Plans for twenty twenty is submitted, uh, that submit at twenty nineteen, annual report is an requirement. Um, and, uh, by June, the thirtieth, begin communications. And, uh, the process for clearing trees above, uh, brush and paint, vegetation adjacent to ponds, storm structures, uh, expect a minimum twenty percent of the city's stormwater ponds. Again, uh, try and, try and contribute twenty percent more to capable issues, inspect all structural treatment devices, group documentation methods, and, uh, submit section two of MS four general permit re-application application. At the line, uh, that it does say, but it's a huge deal, it's, and these things are renewed every five years. And by, and, and each, each time there's a lot of applications to rule. There's very significant rule changes that are being debated on this, uh, this permit. That would get into what type of, uh, uh, we'll say stormwater treatment is necessary with any project that's done by, not just developers, but the city. Well, then there is a lot going on, a lot that's been delayed for many years, but there will be a reissuance, uh, at some point in which, uh, we'd have to submit the permit for another five years of being allowed to discharge stormwater. So anticipated timeline, time for that reissuance is, uh, looking, uh, October, December, this year, the city to reapply, uh, to be recovered as an MS four. And then, uh, twenty twenty-one, January, December, update this, what we think the requirement should be, permit based on, uh, rules. And, uh, some potential new MS four permit requirements, plus to come for new and fully reconstructed impervious surface when, let's tell me, equals one acre or more. Um, that may not sound like much, but it is, it's one of the biggest sticking points of this whole department process. It is a very, very big deal. That's why it's been held up for quite some time, there's been a lot of debate, debate over this. In other words, if you go into an old development, uh, that did not have anything in it. In other words, if you go into an old development, uh, that did not have anything in infiltration basin, things like that, that, uh, at the time that it was built, it, you right now, under the rules, you, you'd be able to reconstruct. You'd be able to reconstruct that because, uh, it's, it's, uh, only, only measured by new pavement. When you, you have to do additional treatment and flash. What this would do is it would say, well, if, if you're doing an acre of reconstruction, then you also have to implement these BMPs, which best manage the practice of treatment and things like that. So that's been heavily contested because they don't always fit everywhere. And so it, it would be a very big challenge to go back retroactively every time you take up pavement. That didn't have these things to try and put them in. And so it's, it's been a contentious topic on, uh, uh, the reissuance. So it's, it's not settled at this point, but, uh, it's, it's still, still part of their, uh, uh, reissues, reissuance discussions. Focus education, distributing, uh, distribution, including these two selected stormwater issues, uh, uh, the AS in some ways, it's, it's going to be focusing on a couple of things that you have to do each year and focus on them. If the city, if they were going to take these two issues on, um, develop, make an inventory of private facilities as a target for, uh, for appropriate DAS, still use education, illicit discharge inspection. Uh, this is, uh, just more process, process related items that can, can at times become a challenge. Again, this, this is one of the reasons why this permit's been held up for quite a while. Because there's a lot of things that you have to follow along with here to, uh, just, just to stay compliant. Develop regulatory mechanisms to require owners of pets to properly dispose of pet pieces of public private property. Uh, someone can find, I think, everywhere, but, uh, again, it's regulatory, regulatory. I, it's, it's, you know, associated with this, so the situation is. Then that develop regulatory mechanisms, hopefully require proper storage, private facilities. And, and increased documentation, which believe it or not, is sort of our least favorite thing to see because there's a lot of documentation to do already and it's, uh, that, uh, I always used to keep up with. All this stuff has, has a pertains to these Seminoles and documents and, and all things need to be recorded. So future program needs updated SWIP in twenty eight, twenty eight and twenty twenty one. Behind reissuement permit, again, remember you're covered under this big blanket, uh, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program document. Uh, with the new rules that has to be updated to comply with them and able to make a plan. And improve efficiencies for inspection, documentation and recording. Reason why I bring this up is because with more, with more reporting, more inspection, with more documentation, it becomes more and more significant to be able to do it efficiently and more in an automated fashion. Fashion is what I, I'd say. Ideally, uh, things are done as automated as possible. So that it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, minimally labor intensive as possible. So I think the more cumbersome it gets to keep up with this stuff, the more automated and related it wants to be. So I will open it up to questions or comments. We're, uh, reminding all that this is part of.
We lost you, Dan.
Dan, I think we've lost you. Can we see, yeah, Brady Bunch still again. Um, so I think while we're, um, waiting for Dan to come back, um, let's just check in. Are there any public comments on the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program presentation? Ooh, it's out of peace. All right. Um, hearing none. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
A motion by council member Mock and a second by council member Sayer. Um, I just want to note too, that after, um, all comments are received, if any of the public hearing will be closed and then no further comments on this issue will be received at this meeting. So given one more opportunity for public comment. All right. Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Is there any action on this? I think it says FYI.
Uh, do we have to do a roll call vote to close the public hearing?
Oh, sure. Uh, I stand, I sit correctly.
(laughing).
Council member Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Council member Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Council member Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Council member McKnight.
Aye, John McRae.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Um, all right. Motion carries. Um, all right. Any questions or comments from the council? Go ahead, Joy.
Uh, I just had a couple of questions and Dan can answer them either here or maybe later. That's my two. Um, I just, on the two thousand and nineteen inspections that were done on twenty percent of the city's stormwater ponds and outfalls, I was just wondering if there were any, um, issues or concerns that we learned during those inspections that we want to apply? In twenty twenty, specific things we want to look for or implement around, um, pollution prevention or I don't know what. So, um, I was just curious about the findings from those inspections, if there was any action to take?
Chad.
And I guess, yeah.
I think Chad can probably jump in and answer that for us.
Again, there, there was no, no issues with any of the inspections and basically it's just, um, you know, backing out some of the catch bases. That's on the, on, so it's cleaning up as long as there's debris more. They're doing, they're doing what they're supposed to do. So no issue.
Good. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and then the, the slide on the potential new MS four permit requirements. Are these what's coming in twenty twenty one or are they possible in the future? I guess I was not sure. I thought that was, ooh, Dana's coming back.
Sorry, uh, I had an internet failure. Where did, where did I lose you in that presentation?
Um, I think you were just, I think you were just wrapping up, Dan. Um, you were at the questions and comments part where we lost you.
Starting?
(laughing). No.
Dan, that's not funny.
At the end. That's not funny.
He's slowly turning into Dan Boyne.
Um, so Joy, we're, we closed the public hearing just to get you up to speed. And Joy was just asking a question about the potential new MS four permit requirements. Joy, I'll have you reiterate that.
Yeah. So Dan, I was just unsure if that slide of the potential new requirements is what's coming for us as we renew for twenty twenty one? Or if that's something future?
No, that'd be, that'd be a subject, uh, renewable and requirement.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, so based on the fact that I seem to drop off at the beginning, uh, I don't know if it's, what's that?
No, we heard your whole presentation, Dan. We're good. We don't need to hear it again. We're good. Um.
Okay, so we're good. All right.
Yeah.
Question?
We're good.
I guess that I work.
No, we heard everything. Yes, it was a great presentation. Um, so I'm going to just piggyback off of Joy's question for the potential new MS four permit requirements. Do we, did you share a date when we anticipate hearing either way about those?
Uh, boy, I hate, I hate these connections here. Um, yeah, I, I, the, the date at this point is going to be later this summer.
Okay.
So.
Okay. And then, um, what is a regulatory mechanism to require owners of pets to pick up after them? Is that a ordinance to pick up?
City code.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we already have one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So we're taking care of that. That's all the questions I have. Glenn? Lori?
No questions.
Sue.
Okay. All right. I think we're good for another year. Dan, thank you very much. Um, let's see. We are on to the consent agenda, which I would love a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Oh, Joy's delayed. I think Lori beat you. Um, and a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Council member Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Council member Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Council member Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Council member McKnight.
Aye, John McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. All right. Motion carries. Uh, there is no unfinished business. For new business, we have nine point one, the COVID pandemic update. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm just gonna attempt to share my screen here. Uh, so something, I'm gonna minimize this. Looking like. So this is kind of a, what I'd call a work in progress as it relates to, I'll start with the CARES Act. Um, the city is eligible to receive three hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars in CARES Act funding or reimbursements. Uh, it is going to operate a little bit differently than what a traditional funding mechanism, uh, would operate in that any unused funds by year end will need to be returned to the federal government. And so, um, there are, um, specifically the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities, which the city is, both members of, are working kind of furiously to, for, um, to help cities determine where and where they cannot use, um, these funds. I'm going to try to make my screen a little smaller here. I would say that the big piece here is the city as, as a whole is not, does not have daunting costs as it relates to the COVID nineteen pandemic. There are a few things that we're looking for some determination on. Um, but we're probably in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range. Not understanding what the, the balance of the year would bring. Uh, things like sneeze guards, hand sanitizing stations, um, are, are examples. Probably one of the biggest things is some adjustments we've made to the cubicles to, to, for that sneeze guard and extra protection for that. Minimal staff time. There's a, there's a threshold for it as it relates to, it has to be, you have to be key personnel in, in planning and managing the, the operation for your organization. It can't just be that you attended a meeting on the pandemic, uh, for an hour and you can mark that hour's worth of time. Uh, there are some different schools of thought and we're kind of working through this. So it'll be a good opportunity to get some feedback from the council. Is there are some cities that are kind of actively looking for opportunities to, to use these funds? So, uh, for example, um, some cities are going to, are going to have facility audits where they're hiring, excuse me, an architect or some other type of professional in that area and running through all their facilities and kind of COVID proofing, if you will, the buildings. We haven't got into that. Our, our initial kind of foundational approach would be to be reimbursed for the things that we need to do and then return that. But the second piece is, and you, you've saw a little bit in my memo to the council, is, uh, the Carver County CDA is facilitating, uh, small business grants or financing. Carver County received, I want to say it's closer to like two million dollars. I'll stand corrected if, if that number is a little bit off. But they're facilitating a, a business support program. Um, it's still in kind of its draft form. But what it would allow for businesses under forty, um, to apply, uh, for ten thousand dollars worth of funding as long as they can show that they've had a demonstrated loss related to the pandemic. And so one of the things that we've been discussing as a concept is because it would work as a lottery system. Um, where, let's say there is a hundred businesses in the county that applied for that. Let's say ten of them were in the city of Carver and only two were selected. You know, the city could, in essence, provide additional funding to Carver County to facilitate, uh, to fund the remaining eight businesses using that example, um, that applied for that. And so for example, so if, if we have three hundred and fifty thousand, um, we could, or the council could designate a hundred thousand of the dollars to go to this, uh, bit, small business financing program or, uh, assistance program. We'd have to work out the details, come up with a program, get the council to approve, uh, the CDA administering that program. Uh, there are items related to rental assistance. The mayor had, had asked about that. And, um, one of the other items in there that's clear that the council has done is eliminated disconnect fees and, uh, late charges for the balance of the year. That's not eligible. Paid property taxes is not eligible. Um, there are, um, you know, hundreds of pages on this. And so one of the things that we're going to be trying to, we're going to be trying to do over the next several weeks is getting a, looking at frankly, what other cities and counties are doing. We don't want to, um, be in a position where the items that we're attempting to be reimbursed for are subject to speculation of, we're kind of brushing up against the line or crossing the line. Oftentimes, unfortunately, these programs, um, maybe not used in the, with the best intent or people might get a little bit aggressive. And, um, I think as an organization, we just want to be one of those groups that we, we feel really confident with the items that we're being, are asked to be reimbursed for. And then not down the line, someone looks at them, they're like, okay, rather than somebody who's maybe being audited based on the expenses they chose to be reimbursed for. So, um, I can, I have a, a draft of a webinar, webinar slides that League of Cities put on that's in your packet. There's an additional, uh, webinar that, uh, I'll be taking part in this week. I kind of just wanted more or less tee this up to, um, get kind of a, an opinion from the council on your philosophy of how you want that staff to approach this issue. Uh, two, your level of interest in pursuing some type of partnership with the Carver County CDA on some type of, uh, business financing or support. And then three, is there any other area specifically that you want staff to say, yes, pursue this? Um, and, you know, assuming that, you know, the day-to-day operational stuff we're going to ask for reimbursement on, but they, if, whether you've seen it or not, are there other areas, um, within this packet? Or ideas that you have that might be eligible for reimbursement that you want us to dig into? So with that, I'll, I'll, uh, open it up for questions on the CARES Act funding of this, or CARES Act, uh, topic of this update.
Brent, you said you're looking for three pieces of feedback from us. I got two and three, the philosophy and then other areas.
And then how interested the council is in forming a partnership with the CDA on, um, funding small business or providing financial assistance to small business using CARES Act funding.
Perfect. Thank you. Right. Questions, comments, feedback for Brent? Maybe I'll go first. Um, so, um, kind of going through this document and, you know, Brent, I, I agree with you. I want us to try to use as much of this money as we can for the city of Carver and for our needs and for reimbursement. But boy, this is a fine line and I don't want the city of Carver to be the one that's the, included in the story, you know, six months, six years from now, when the audit comes through and you figure out all of the, the communities who really pushed that envelope and that line and may have used funds that weren't used to the letter of the law. Um, I have some ideas, you know, you and I have talked about, is the website an eligible expense? Because that's letting folks interact with the community or with, with city hall, but without leaving their homes. Or is that something, you know, um, but I, I definitely want to keep things within the letter of the law. When I was going through the PowerPoint from the League's presentation, um, the mention on page, it's page sixty-three, numbered sixty-three from the, the deck from the League, um, talks about rent reimbursement. So we talked a little bit, um, last Friday at the, the Business Alliance meeting about the CDA and doing small business loans. But I also think, um, that we should keep in mind, um, or I would like the council to consider potentially offering some rent or mortgage relief payments. Um, I spoke this afternoon with Eric Gentry and he works for the Community Action Partnership, the CAP Agency of Scott Carver in Dakota County. He's also a, a Carver resident. Um, and he was kind of talking about, um, some of our options. And certainly, I know, just enough to be dangerous after the conversation with him. But we could partner with an organization like the CAP Agency or even the CDA really, um, to put a program in place to help Carver residents with, um, I mean, assuming that it, it falls with under the requirements. But this, this bullet point, this question makes me believe that it will, to help with rent and mortgage payment. to help with rent and mortgage payments for folks who have been affected by COVID through job loss or health concerns or sickness or whatever else is a, a qualifiable expense. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there for consideration, maybe a conversation starter. Brent, as far as your ideas, um, I think I kind of talked about philosophy. Try to spend as much here, uh, but I'm not against, um, partnering with another CDA or a CAP Agency, to share that money and to help us get that money distributed out through the community for the folks who may be struggling. And I think interested in partnership, yes. And then other areas, I kind of mentioned rent relief. So, um, I think that's it.
Courtney, can I ask a question about something you just talked about?
Sure, if you understand I said just enough to be dangerous.
Yep, and I was gonna say, yep. Um, if you would know the answer. So it's, um, the CAP Agency obviously is the three counties. If we were to, uh, redirect, I guess, some of this CARES money to them, do we have any control over it coming back to the city of Carver specifically, or does it just get distributed at that point where they want to put it? I?
Yeah. I'm more familiar with the CDA, so that would probably be where I go first. But they, we'd set up a program and kind of in tandem with them and then, um, use them to administer the program. So, in essence, the council, it would be the city program, but you, uh, I'm not sure if they would charge an administrative fee, but that's, you know, they're the experts in housing. And so to get them to, um, administer that and run through the program, I'd want to get some examples from them of what the criteria were, how you demonstrate that criteria. And, you know, frankly, we just don't have, uh, um, the staff to try to, to do that and so, and, or the resources. And so I think they'd be an excellent choice. I'm not as familiar with the CAP Agency as I am with the CDA. But I, I'm imagining that any group that you would hire as an administrator or partner with as an administrator would have to, would, would be agreeing to use, have that money spent in the city proper.
And that's what, if I can just, so in, in my mind, yes, absolutely. And that's kind of along the lines of what we've discussed with the CDA in terms of small business loans. That it stays, it's money that's been designated to Carver, so it stays in our community. I absolutely have no intention of designating or, you know, working in tandem and partnership with the CAP or the CDA to distribute money to folks in Hastings. You know, I think, I think it's my understanding that we can kind of make the rules and governance for this. So making sure that that is absolutely a requirement, that it stays within Carver Upper City lines.
Okay. And then, so for the administering body, I guess whatever that would be, so we'll just call it that for right now. Um, I would be very interested to see what their, um, criterias and stipulations for receiving that money. Just because I think, at least for me, there's people who are, are, you know, rent or, and I'm not lumping everyone together, but maybe rent or that maybe are of a lower income who, um, would be eligible for that money, but there are also people who own, you know, who have been more well-off and have lost jobs now due to the pandemic. So is there, you know, if it's your tax returns from last year that they go by, it could be very different from you making like nothing right now. So I'm just curious.
Amen, sister.
Right. So I'm just, so I'm just, I want to be very careful. I, I would not have a problem using these funds to help folks directly in Carver who need it, but I would also like to be very aware of the criteria that they're going to use so that it, it could help Carver from top to bottom and all the way across, rather than just helping one segment of the people.
Yeah, I agree. This is the part where I know just enough to be dangerous, but it's my assumption that we would, in the agreement of saying we will partner with you on this, that we would be able to have a little bit of say. Or they would tell us how programs like this work. So what Eric did say is that the CDA is kind of the default organization for the mortgage counseling. So if you've lost your job and you don't think you can pay your mortgage anymore and you have that conversation with your lender, there is a mortgage counseling requirement in most cases. Um, and they're the ones who do that, that mortgage counseling, if you will. So, um, and then that's how funds are distributed. So for the mortgage aspect of things, it CAP Agency might not be our folks. Anyways, I'm, full disclosure, I'm on the CAP Agency board, so I'm familiar with their work. Um, but Eric has worked for both the CAP Agency and for the CDA and says that both are in this housing space and we could probably partner equally, um, with them depending on who had the capacity and who has the time. And that's, that's the urgency with this. We are working on a really short runway. We've got to use this money before the end of the year. So we're talking like essentially five months if you assume that it's basically up the straight.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
I have some comments for the council and Brent. Um, just kind of the philosophy of don't leave money on the table. Absolutely want to be part of this. I have good confidence in CDA, so I mean, I think they would be a very good trusted partner. As the same comments that were made, as much as we can control or keep, um, the funds for Carver residents, um, I'd like to know from the CDA, like, what control we do have. But then if there is still money on the table, I'd rather, you know, have it spent at the county level, but ideally have it come back to our residents if, if that's possible. But if not, um, still contribute with at the county, just as our, as part of our community. They support us, we should support them. Um, but first choices for, as many funds as would be eligible to have it dispersed for city residents and then from there, within the county. Yeah, I guess, I don't, does CDA have other competitors? I really just don't know enough about different administrative, like, arms that would, be a fit for us and have mutual interest.
The CDA is a governmental unit, so they, it's not really, I would say, they're not a, in competition with anybody. Part of everyone's property taxes, um, go toward funding them. The county board, um, appoints members to their, to their board and I think it approved their budget. So that's how there's a connection there.
Or maybe this is what I, the way I should have asked it, is, um, do we have any other options?
Yeah, I mean, I think there, there are, the mayor mentioned the CAP Agency, there are, um, I'm not sure if there's a, in kind of greater Minnesota, there's initiative foundations. There's like the Southwest Initiative Foundation. I'm not sure if, I'm not familiar with one that covers the metropolitan area. That might be through the Met Council. I'm not a hundred percent on that. Then in the criteria that we'd like to use is somebody that's local, that we've got a relationship with could, um, so that could, you know, when you're discussing, you know, a hundred thousand dollars of, of funding. You know, the way that I envision it is we'd come up with an outline of a, a plan, you know, to some of the elements that I've heard the council discuss tonight, bring it to a work session and say, is this something that you want us to kind of, um, formalize, put it into a document, bring to a, a council meeting for you to take action on? But it, you know, I recognize it's probably hard to, to discuss this without like any framework, but uh, I know the CDA does have a draft of their own program that they're going to administer through the county. And so even if we don't have something Carver-centric, we can bring it back to your August third work session and say, this is what a city, you know, cross out county and put in city of Carver. That's what, how this could function, um, to give you some context to what you're, would be considering.
Joy, just a second. So you asked other, you know, I think like launched ministry may, they work more on homelessness, but I think that they're kind of in this housing space. I'm sure that there are a number of other nonprofits in our quadrant of the, the metro who work on this. I would be in favor of working with the biggest one who can help us the quickest because we're working in such a, you know.
Yeah, so I, I would support the CDA.
Super tight time.
Definitely be nice to see something at the August third work session.
Go ahead, Joy.
Just some input. I love the idea of trying to take this money and benefiting as many different types or groups of Carver residents as possible. I do support, uh, the CDA's efforts around small businesses. So I think that's a worthy effort. If we can try to benefit businesses that are, um, you know, owned by residents or within the city of Carver, that would be great. Um, I also like the idea of the CAP Agency just because that also touches on people who are having issues making rent or their mortgage payments. The other thing that stuck out to me in the PowerPoint was employment and training programs. And I feel like there's some local agencies that help with that too. So that would be my other, if we could explore that too. Cause I think that would benefit yet another group of residents. Um, and spread our money around.
Yeah, there's the Career Force. It, there's, it's the Career Force Center through Carver County would, does some of those services. So that's a good idea.
Okay, that's my input.
Thank you, Joy. Glenn?
I guess I'm the minority in this group. Um, I don't look at it where, oh, look, we've got free money. Let's go spend it. Let's create ways to spend money. Let's cover our bases. But I don't look at going over and above ways to create ways to spend three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But, um, I understand that there are people that are hurting and struggling through this whole time. Um, and there are agencies out there that do have, uh, sources and, and financial sources and stuff to help people out. I just don't feel like getting too creative about just spending. It's not free money. It comes from somewhere. So anyway, that's my two cents.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Um, do you have clear enough feedback from us? All right. Um, with that then, we are on to.
We just have one more item.
Oh, sorry.
Not CARES Act related, just pandemic.
Go ahead, sorry.
We haven't received any additional word on, um, kind of the Stay Safe Minnesota. So as it relates to our rental, rental facilities, we're going to continue to maintain them as closed as far as, uh, the village hall space, church by the river, et cetera, until that changes. I just wanted, I know that's a, an issue that impacts community groups and individuals. I just wanted to check in with the council. Every time we meet, make sure that you're still comfortable with that. If that, that changes, this is the opportunity to say, I'm starting to feel uneasy about that. But we're, we were aiming to try to have that, kind of that twenty-five, uh, indoors as a kind of a safe space. Right now it's at ten, um, based on what I've seen at, at last. Hoping that goes up, but trying to predict, um, what's going to happen with COVID from day to day is like they say, trying to smell the number nine. It's, it's not possible.
Brent, no one says that.
Nobody says that. Dan probably said that once to you.
Never mind. It's hard to do.
Um, I, I am fine with continuing down that course. Everybody else is nodding? Joy is nodding. Glenn is?
Thank you.
Okay. Indifferent. That's the word I was trying to think. Thank you. Okay, now council member communications. Um, Joy, you want to go first?
Sure. So we kind of talked about this. We had a Carver Business Alliance meeting last week. Um, Elise Durbin from Carver County Community Development Agency joined our meeting, uh, which was great. She shared a presentation, um, that talked about all, what their agency does and also what her responsibilities are. Um, and then a lot of information about all of the support helps for businesses, uh, during the pandemic. So she went over federal, state, local, county, all the different resources that were available. So I think that was helpful for the group. Um, and I asked, uh, Brent to see if we could host some of those links because I think they were valuable. On our city of Carver website, we have a for businesses area. So that's a good place to go, right? If you're a business in Carver. Um, I just think it's just challenging for businesses right now to navigate what's available to them. Like a lot of them are really struggling. So I'm going to try to make it as easy as possible. But it was a good meeting. Um, there are a couple of new businesses that are looking to come to Carver. Fortunately, that also mutes our couple of businesses that have left, um, have not survived the pandemic. But I'm excited about, uh, some new businesses including an ice cream shop and, uh, hair salon. So. More to come. That's my only update.
All right. Thank you, Joy. Glenn, any updates?
We had no planning commission meeting, so that's all I got.
All right. Lori?
Um, there is very likely a parks commission meeting, August tenth. But, uh, we'll know for sure when it gets closer whether or not there's agenda items. Otherwise, I don't have any updates.
Thank you. Christie?
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to update again. For Steamboat Days, uh, we'll be making the call, um, early August. Um, I've talked to a number of our, I guess our entertainment acts and they are willing to just wait and as long as we can wait because they don't have anything else going on right now either. Um, obviously a lot of this will depend on the governor's orders. Um, and there may be, um, a few things that we can do and a few things we can't. But again, we'll just have to, to wait a little bit longer and see. Uh, we had an HPC meeting, uh, last week. We had a couple of garages that were approved. So, that, that was good to, to see everyone from the HPC again. Uh, I did want to, I guess, address, um, earlier in the meeting during our communication section. It was really nice to see that we had people joining back in with us. Um, it's been kind of hard during COVID, obviously, to connect with our residents. Um, I think that, you know, it, it seemed that there was somewhat of a laundry list of maybe grievances towards, um, 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 some of our, our, our processes here. So I think that it's really great to hear from our residents to, uh, let us know that maybe we've, we found that we could do a little more maybe in the communication section or something like that. And this is just me, this is just a personal comment from myself, um, not the rest of the council, but I know when it came to even like the, uh, the gravel pit, um, I was part of, I, you know, jumped in on a, a social media, I guess, long, long, uh, comment train on there and, you know, did mention things like it is out of our jurisdiction. So we're not able to, um, take action on that. Um, but again, looking at that, saying social media might not be enough, right? Not everybody is on there. Um, a lot of folks were, but, um, not everybody. So I'm, I'm really ha- happy to, to say that we had those or to see that we had those people on tonight to let us know, um, some of the questions they had about the water treatment plant specifically and what's happening up, what's happening up in their neighborhood and a few things that we can take a look at. So, um, I also would suggest if there, if, if you have a list that seems to be growing, please email us, um, so that we can take a look at it. Email Brent from the city, email the city council so that it doesn't, so it doesn't, um, seem to be snowballing on itself. So we can take a look at working harder for you if that's what we, what we need to do. And you know, when it comes to different programs that we have in town that we look at, at, uh, you know, going forward with or not going forward with, we, the more input we get from residents on it is, the better. You know, we, we do get some now and we, as council, and again, I shouldn't say we, I'll talk for myself, but I have to weigh out what I hear from one resident to another resident, to a group of residents. So, um, the more comments and the more involved that you can be to let us know what you're thinking and what your needs are, I would appreciate any way that, uh, you know, email, phone, whatever it might be. So, um, with that, I am finished.
All right. Thank you. Um, so I echo your sentiments, Christie. Um, you know, my biggest frustration, frustration sitting up here is kind of how often our work happens in a vacuum and we don't get that feedback from residents. So really good to hear from folks, um, at tonight's meeting and I appreciate the comments. Updates for me, um, the Regional Council of Mayors meeting was last Monday. That was our annual meeting where we all invite our school superintendents and then talk about a predetermined topic. This year it was distance learning. Um, and it was really interesting, um, to hear from the superintendents. Our superintendent wasn't able to join because she's really busy just starting a new job. But, um, hear from other folks as to kind of what their concerns are as they're looking at reopening schools. Transportation is going to be the biggest hurdle in their minds. The whole mask issue and the issues that the school districts are having to deal with in some of the communities where there are mask mandates, but some of the school districts who are like ours, that cover a bunch of different communities and then they're having to try to figure out how they're going to lead things procedurally when masks may be required in city A, but not city B, but in city C and not in D. And then the other kind of overwhelming theme from that is that they're, they are really looking for direction from the state in terms of reopening versus going community by community by community. So, um, that was super interesting. Again, kind of echoing, echoing Joy's thoughts on the, the Business Alliance meeting, Elise was terrific and she offered some really cool stats and figures as far as how much money had already been, um, given out through those forgivable grants from the federal government to Carver businesses. It was something like sixty-four businesses. Now that It was something like sixty-four businesses. Now that includes everybody who has a Carver address, which is how they kind of delineate all that. But it was, it was very, very interesting. Um, the other thing, um, kind of over the, the Fourth of July holiday and kind of through conversation um with some of my neighbors, I have neighbors with a couple of, of Carver Board members, and that is a group that has not met since last October, as you know. Right around the time that I was trying to tick off all of the commission meetings to get to one before the end of the year. Um, so they are feeling um a little unengaged. So I am going to try to come up with some communications for them. Um, I've talked to Brent about making sure that we try to have a meeting, even if it's an optional meeting, a little bit more on a regular cadence so that those commissioners can remain in the know um and continue to be engaged in their community. So even if it's a, hey, we're going to meet, there's not a robust agenda, completely optional meeting, but, you know, just to keep those folks engaged because, you know, it has absolutely been extenuating circumstances, but it's also been a long time since we've called them um to serve in the way that they want to. So.
And if I could just add to that.
Yeah.
Up to October, they really did invest a lot of time and effort on the master, if I'm not calling it the right.
Parks Master.
Parks Master Plant.
Yeah.
Um, so it went from a lot of work to, so I can see um not feeling as engaged.
Yeah. So I think that that's.
Yep. Their input was really needed and appreciated.
No, they're volunteers. They want help. So um, working on that. And I think um, I may have mentioned something about this two weeks ago. But um, I am working to see if we can get a, a food distribution. Um, the, the cap agency in Esperanza do food distributions and they're always looking for community um venues where you can do a a touch-free um mobile, mobile pantry food distribution where people just kind of drive through in their cars. Being that we have such a venue, great venue for that in Carver Station, um, just trying to see if we can get something like that locked up for the community. So stay tuned on that.
Courtney, could I say one thing after that with the, uh, with the food station? So um, again, I, we put it on social media, but I wanted to thank everybody who gave to the Carver, we'll call it the Carver Food Bank at Gazebo Park. Um, I live right next door, so I got to see a lot of people coming in and out and using it. So that was really nice to see that it was going to a good cost and the people were using it. Um, we did now pull it out. Obviously, it's been ninety-five degrees. Um, the critters, I will tell you, like rice there. So we had, um, we had a few critters who were joining, so it was time to get everything out of there. Um, and we did donate as a city. We donated seventy-five pounds of food to the Bountiful, Bountiful Basket Food Shelf um from everything that was left over that we took there.
That's a lot. All right. Mr. Merrick, any updates?
Uh, just following up on the water treatment plant feedback that the, the council got, you know, we'll take that. And I, we had some of that feedback um from the open house as far as like landscaping and, and look at the, you know, look at the building. I would, I would offer to those listening in the council that the communication, you know, is an ongoing improvement area and it's, I would say sometimes it's an art more than a, a science. And I think the, you know, this is an opportunity for growth. Um, I think as the council knows and maybe the folks that weren't as involved as when we were really heavy into like looking at the water treatment plant, we were looking at um water rates going up by double-digit percentages and connection fees going up by forty to fifty percent. And so um, we probably missed an opportunity to, to provide a narrative to say if you are going to add on a four-season porch, would you add it on to your existing house or would you buy a lot across town and put that four-season porch on by itself? You know, one will be manageable for price, the other one will be more expensive. And so um, we missed an opportunity um to let people be involved in that. And so it's, you know, one of the things we can improve on. Um, the other piece is, you know, initially the council had kind of a direction of the appearance of that building and being cost-conscious. We, we can reengage, we can do some things, but I just wanted to kind of get some direction from the council because um, as you know, you know, you can spend a lot pretty quickly on a building. And so this one, that's the kind of a check back in on I'm not looking for like a dollar amount, but I guess I'm looking for like what your expectations are as it relates to, to that building. Because there are, you know, things that can be done to the roof, things that, you know, other architectural features. Um, you know, you have the Carver Creek Lift Station, you have the Water Treatment Plant City. I mean, there are varying degrees of um architectural features and design that you can do. You know, it just, it all gets down to, to money and then impact that corresponding neighborhood. And I, my initial sense is, you know, to reach out to that, you know, reengage the neighborhood, have like a, you know, a Zoom meeting and say like, okay, have a architect with BMI and work with Dan and Chad and say, okay, you know, help us make some changes to this. You know, people tend to support what they create. But um, I don't want to un- overpromise and underdeliver either where it's, you know, soldier, soldier courses of brick and, you know, other architectural, you know, they're up and down.
I didn't know what that was either. I thought that was an analogy. I was going to Google again later.
Smell the number nine.
No, you had the soldiers.
But uh.
Soldier, like.
So it's like on the building, they're typically laid end to end, but sometimes for architectural features, they're laid vertically or arched. Um, there are different things you can do with windows. Um, you know, and so just to get a sense of the council. Because the, the thing that I, you know, you don't have to look too far within kind of our local area within Carver County to see how larger projects can um create tons of acrimony in the community. You look at how the city hall impacted uh the city of Victoria. And I think it's still is as far as what that created in that community, you know, and everyone, I think, was at the best of intentions, but it created something that I'd hate to see uh Christie's bluff neighborhood drive by this project, which will take a long time. We were talking about a year and a half. And every time they drive by, you know, they become irritated. And that's how um relationships become strained, not just in the short term, but in the long term. And I think we've demonstrated an ability not to have that because we've taken positions or uh adjusted kind of our course of action based on feedback. But before we start making promises or saying we can do certain things, you know, I don't want to come back to the council and say, well, our twelve million dollar water plant now is twelve point seven five.
Brent, um, the building, so we obviously don't have the picture in front of us right now. The add-on though is matching what is currently there, right? So it's not, we're not, you know, looking entirely different. It's just, it matches.
And can you, uh, actually, I can, I can probably bring that up here.
Well, and if not, I mean, we looked at it. I just want to make sure that.
No, I would appreciate the message.
Oh, okay. Good. And then I'll have a couple of comments after we, after you pull that up.
I'm working on it. Almost there. I don't have a good picture, so if you could share your screen, Dan, I'd be hopeful.
Dan, we don't want the whole presentation again.
You, you asked for it.
No, we want the picture.
She wants the original.
Well, you want, you want the, the score presentation player. All right. There you go. So I'm going to, here's a decent picture.
Okay.
There you go. So this is a little bit, this is a little bit closer.
Can you go back? Okay.
There. Leave right there, Dan.
Okay.
So just to, for some council perspective, like originally um the, the building ribbon wasn't there and the lower level windows.
Sorry, tell me what a building ribbon is?
It's kind of like, if you look at the middle between the two windows, it's hard to see there, but it'd be like a different course of like stone or, you know, sometimes it has a different color that kind of, if you think of like a, a gift, that it would have a ribbon around.
It runs horizontally.
Correct. Um, it didn't have windows um on the lower level. So I asked for those windows in the lower level to be added on, on the sides. And then, uh, for example, like the garage doors, right now are white. Um, in the front of the building, there are, like, all the doors are a sand color. So we're going to be replacing those doors with a sand um to kind of try to replicate a more residential feel rather than these kind of oversized.
And not have a big contrast of color. It'll just sort of.
White doors. Um, but I mean, you know, there are, you know, I'm gonna, I've heard enough like architectural terms where I don't even know if they're real, but like, you know, like they, like basically those little features, I think they're called dormers that are on top of like the um Carver Creek Lift Station. You could add things like that.
So can, I'm just going to stop for just one second. So for me, the low-hanging fruit, at least I would like to look at, we heard some good comments today for things like, I know, I'll preface this with, the building is very similar. So we're not adding on something that doesn't look like what is already there. But we did hear things like possibly making the doors, which now you've addressed, that will be more sand color. They won't stand out as much. Um, the aesthetics, the windows, I can't quite tell here what they look like, but as long, maybe we make sure that the windows are kind of in keeping with what a residential window would look like, um, realizing it's in a, you know, more industrial nature, but something that looks like that. Um, they talked about the trees and I think certainly we can get trees with a higher um caliper to put those in so they actually have some screening right away rather than have smaller trees. Um, let's see. And then I guess the other one that hit me too was the construction traffic concern. So I know that initially it was to have that road closed down all the time for the entire time of the project, right? Is that like twenty-four seven?
No, I mean, um, Dan and Chad and I haven't kind of vetted that completely.
So maybe we can figure out times where it might need to be closed down, but let's not, if we can help it, I mean, that's a long closure. So let's, let's not keep it closed down just continuously because we just are. Let's see when we can keep it open and maybe you guys want to come up with a plan of what that might look like. That's all I have on there.
Um, you know, I, well, who else wants to go? Anybody else? Glenn? Joy? Um, you know, I think we went through this process and we could absolutely have a Mercedes water treatment plant, but we would absolutely pay for it. And I think we tried um as a council to really keep these costs in line. You've heard me say it before and I'll say it again, that a water treatment plant, facility expansion, um while a very, very needed piece of infrastructure in the community is the least sexy investment that we could ever make. You know, so I think that this is a, a building and the expansion does a good job of blending in and will look like, you know, in four years, like something that's all already been there, has been part of that facility for a really long time. So um, it gives us the, the needed capacity that we need for our growing community. At the same time, it is on the scaling model and um if Ralph or anybody who um who participated in tonight's meeting is listening to this, I'd be happy to share um it with you. But when we went through and made the decision for this option, everything was kind of graded. And this was the one that in terms of how long it'll last and money, and I, I really, I forget um what the other categories are. Um, but I know council members going through this. This was the one that scored the best and seemed to be the best use of taxpayer monies in order to accomplish our goal of meeting the needs of the water treatment capacity that we need in our community. That is it for me. Mr. Merrick, do you have anything else?
So I'm hearing kind of modest sculpt changes, like or modest improvements to the, you know, design. Like, hey, I think I'm seeing on the, probably the east side of the property, probably a chain link fence. That's something we can probably upgrade to a more residential uh looking fence.
Is that there already?
It appears so. I guess I've never noticed that fence, but.
Well, if it's, if it's completely screened by trees, is it even, I mean, do we need to even worry about something like?
And I would argue if it's there already.
I, the fence to me is not of my concern. It's just, I, I'm more concerned about having that, you know, a better tree line around it.
Correct. Okay. Good, that's good feedback.
This is Joy. Um, just one other comment from a communications perspective. Uh, I know Dan mentioned this a couple of times in his presentation. Is for drilling wells and the connections between those wells and our treatment facilities, storage facilities are going to be really visible to the community. Is there something that we can start doing now to communicate nearby residents or whatever? Just so that it doesn't sound like, you know, it doesn't feel as much like, oh, this just got communicated to us. It's just happening.
Yeah, I think that's, I can answer that, Dan. Councilmember. And I think that's, the feedback that we got is something that we can uh, you know, use tonight where um we can identify properties that are going to be along that route and just send, you know, it's similar to frankly, like um letters that we sent to the neighborhood for the twenty nineteen Improvement Project. We sent letters to that neighborhood four years ago, or maybe it was five.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, six years ago, because we knew that was going to be a painful project. And it was still painful at the time we went through it for everybody involved. And um, you know, this work will be coming up and maybe there are um things that folks want to plan for ahead of time. Um, and having that information, um, because putting that information frankly in a newsletter is, is going to is going, is not going to resonate with folks because they would go to look for it. And so I think we need to send uh, a notice to property owners along that route. So if they see it in their backyard, I mean, we're not going to be going to anyone's private property. Correct, Dan? We don't need any easement acquisition for this.
That is correct.
So all this isn't going to impact anyone's individual property, but they'll notice it. And so.
Yeah, it'll be equipment, it'll be loud, it'll, you know, whatever. Yeah.
Right. So for example, um, we, knock on wood, we've been, we were successful, but like, you know, last week we sent out uh notices to Meridian Fields and the Spring Creek Neighborhood, letting them know um that there is going to be signal light construction at Spring Creek Drive and Jonathan Carver Parkway. In that case, it was a week before. And so again, that kind of gets back to that art and science piece in that instance, you know, that was good. I think that was a good notice. We haven't received any feedback to the contrary. This one we might want to give a little bit more. Is that going to be enough time? Um, hopefully. Because part of the issue is if you notice it too early, uh, people tend to forget about it. And so it's that timing piece here. So I want to, we have our weekly engineering and planning coordination meeting on Tuesdays. We'll talk about when that work will actually happen and providing uh a good, a good amount of notice where they know about it, but not that it's, you know, if that work is going to happen next spring, I'd be hesitant to send it out now.
Yeah.
And have people forget about it. It'll be kind of a wasted effort. Some people might remember it. Um, but more than likely, they're, they're going to be surprised. So it's probably in that sixty to ninety day range. Because every project has to kind of stand on its own.
So just to add on to that, I agree with the postcards and sending that out kind of sixty to ninety days in advance so that it's front of mind. And hopefully, folks have had time to work their way through the mail pile. Um, but I think another lesson that we're learning tonight is kind of consistency in messaging early, um, which makes me think that we should start, I don't know, you know, I don't know that we have a social media content calendar per se, but kind of consistently messaging things like this project, like the JCP project, which next summer is going to be a huge, um, it's going to be of immense significance in our community. And everybody who lives here and in our surrounding communities is going to be affected. Um, and just so that we can just hopefully start pushing that out with blurbs in the newsletter and social media messaging to try to get that elevated a little bit so that, you know, we live in this world. We know that we've been talking about the water treatment facility for the last for years, but in earnest, hardcore for the last year. But I think we need to just make sure and work even harder to make sure that it's transparent and.
I would, I would also offer that a big part of this is war, like targeting the communication. So I venture to say everyone, the, the majority of the residents that didn't attend that neighborhood meeting that are more concerned with all this water treatment. attend that neighborhood meeting are more concerned with how this water treatment plant is going to impact their rates, you know. And so, understanding, you know, when to engage a neighborhood, when a project is happening is, is more of a target communication than putting it in a newsletter where, you know, over 90% of your residents are wanting the information related to cost and timing, but how the building looks. I mean, most folks are going to want it to be built as efficiently as possible. And I'm not saying this neighborhood doesn't. It's just they have a different level of concern because they're going to be looking at it or driving by it on a daily basis. And so, finding that right recipe for communication is critical.
Agreed. Anything else?
No, that'll do it.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Paul's second. We have a motion by council member Muck and a second by council member Sayer. Any further discussion? All those in, Mr. Merrick, can you do a little couple, please?
Council member Muck?
Aye, Christie Muck.
Council member Sayer?
Aye, Laura Sayer.
Council member Henry?
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Council member McKnight?
Aye, Jordan McKnight.
Mary Johnson?
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.